I think she must not coming up here. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and I watched like the hairy shows and.
You want the exact session? I don't, I don't know what we did.
By the state.
I don't think so.
Shoes, did you have to buy them yourself? Oh, you bought the shirt? It's a, yeah, no, that I believe in them. That I, I for the healthiness of the baby, absolutely. But a long, longer time in the past, I started that.
I don't think we did.
Anybody else?
Yeah, she said she was gonna start it.
Lots of room.
Natalie, we're screaming?
Yeah.
Okay.
So move. I'll say it in there. Morning, Lori.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, I really don't have much to say other than just um the discussion of filling that vacancy um that was left when Karen Jensen retired um for the community health position um depending upon if you guys are wanting to fill it as a clerical or as a public health assistant.
What's a recommendation?
A public health assistant.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to fill that as a public health assistant.
I think it was uh Randy that seconded. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's almost like we had a week off.
Hello, yes, I do. Um, so if you're wanting to fill it as a public health assistant, I think that's fine. We have a copy of the job description that the state provides. We as the county do not have a public health assistant position. So I'd just say you would also have to approve that position and then decide where your pay scaling it or putting it on our pay scale. So um.
We would have to do that before.
If you're going to advertise, you're gonna have to know what like we're advertising for, what the job description is and what the rate is. Well, unless you could do it as part of your filling the vacancy. So as what you're filling, but you'd have to do the job description separately. Right, because we just have what the state provided us and ours from the county would, you know, be similar, I would say.
Yeah, I would.
Right, I mean, we'd be just filling it into our template and then deciding, yeah, where it would, where it fit on the pay scale.
Mr. Chair, do we need to get the new position on the agenda for next week? Once we approve the new position, then? Yeah, yeah. Okay, so do we? Okay.
Yeah, so the contract will be amended if you do decide to do it as a public health assistant because the current contract only says clerical. Um, so that smaller dollar amount um is listed in the current contract, but if you decide um that will be amended from the state, yes. Um, I believe October, I think, yeah, I think the work contracts are October, I believe.
Not sure if I, do I rescind my motion then to approve the position?
Well, if you're okay just to state what position that you wanted this to be, basically, how are you gonna fill the vacancy, right?
Yeah, is that what we're asking to do on the agenda? I think so. Okay, so, okay, so. Right, so. My motion will be to fill the vacancy at the.
As a public health.
Yeah, as a public health assistant. And I would concur.
And we'll have a new contract and we'll have to, yeah, put it on the pay scale with where it fits.
Fits.
Right, right.
So you look like you have a question, so.
That she would like to get this.
Yeah, she would like.
I don't have a question.
Right.
Right, I mean, we could utilize what the state has provided and just say that it will be this on our county template and the state has like some things about how it's graded, but that doesn't apply to us. So like that would be different. Yeah.
For two weeks.
So, so what this motion is doing is just wants to know.
So the motion was to fill the vacancy at the community health office. Okay, but.
We're all right.
The vacancy will be filled with a public health assistant.
And that's what your motion was.
Right, okay.
But.
To be created.
We're just trying to figure out if there's any way she can advertise sooner, so she can get this started instead of delaying the two weeks.
You can do an emergency motion in this sort of situation to allow her to start that process.
Okay, so I'll make the emergency motion so that this, yeah, I'll amend the, amend the existing motion to allow the, or to fill the vacancy at the community health office with the position of public health assistant. And make an emergency motion to, to dec- okay, you got it. And to be able to advertise to hire.
And yeah, I did, um.
And I would second the amendment to Troy's motion.
To be determined.
Yeah, so I mean, I did take a look at this, what the state has and I mean, based on the state's requirements that this position is actually meeting with um applicants distributing information, possible travel, things like that. I mean, I took a look at already where it should fall on the pay scale and I guess, you know, I it looks to me like it should be if we did the same thing um graded at a twenty-five. So whether you want to do that or if she's gonna just advertise as pay to be determined or.
I would say probably that because then they can approve the job description with the pay scale next time or whatever, but at least you can start the process. Um, the other thing is it's going to be a full-time position.
Yes, full-time position.
In order to advertise, do we need a job description?
Right.
It's like we're hiring for a position without having a position be a real position, so.
Gee, that sounded like you went to Vermillion Law School.
It's hard to hire somebody for a position that doesn't exist.
You do need a job description in order to advertise.
Right, I mean, unless you just are approving based on the state's job description that was provided.
So what's, what's in the?
Because I think you all have that, right?
Twenty-five, pay grade twenty-three, okay.
I mean, are you in agreement?
I'm not sure if they, I don't think we have, I don't know that I had that as part of the.
This was attached like two weeks ago from Cody, I think, right, or?
I had emailed it, I think, onto.
I said, did everybody get it? I can go copy this if that will help.
I haven't.
You might, yeah, you might, that might have been, yeah, two weeks ago with that.
What the state's gonna do, so maybe, maybe the proper, I think the proper Roberts rule thing would be to do, if we want to do all that other than the contract, so the contract we can do separately, sign that. Um, yeah, because those are due and so, so a substitute motion might be to declare an emergency to authorize hiring, approve the job, the state's version of job description or adopt the state's text for the job description as ours and assigns, um, assign the, assign the, the, uh, the job to um pay grade twenty-five. That would be a, that the proper way to do that would be, would somebody want to make that substitute motion?
Well, he amended, like he amended.
They didn't have all that stuff in there, so I think the proper Roberts rules thing to do would be, that way we don't have to vote on the amendment and we could just do a substitute.
Change it from an amendment to a substitute.
Would somebody want to make that substitute motion?
I'll make the substitute motion. I didn't know if I could do the substitute since I made the original motion, but okay, I'll make the substitute motion.
Okay, Commissioner, then we'll second the substitute motion. All right, so the substitute motion is to declare an emergency, adopt the state's um text for the, for the county job description of a public health assistant and um advertise for the new position and assign it to a pay grade twenty-five.
I have looked at that.
Yeah.
All right.
Where, where, so any other discussion? A refresher, where do we advertise for that? Are we?
Last year, we posted on Indeed.
We usually post on Indeed and then Job Service. We work with them here and we're telling them they're great to help us out. And if we want.
Using the PO or is that by law?
Um, we check with them on rates and if it is up to the department head on whether or not they want to budget for that.
So the, so the motion is just to advertise?
Yeah.
So, and whatever will affect it, indeed, and, and the state websites and work.
Expression of HR.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Say no.
Thank you, commissioners.
So much.
Thank you.
All we need to do now is a contract.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
And that will let them know, um, Cody, will you let them know or do I let them know that it's been changed to send us a new?
Yes, I will have them send over.
Okay, that was exciting. Okay, so next item on the agenda is number eight. Uh, discussion possible action to authorize chair to sign an annual State Department, Department of Health uh Wick contract.
That we have to wait on.
We have to wait on that one. Okay, so that one, we'll wait on that one. So that's same, that's the contract we're talking about, okay. Um, and then number nine, public hearing of the twenty twenty-four county provisional budget, which has been put in the paper, been publicly available, so um is there anybody that, yeah, so we need to open up, yeah, open up the hearing, uh, public hearing of the, yes, twenty twenty-four county, the county provisional budget. Is there anybody from the public, anybody present that would like to address the board uh regarding the twenty twenty-four provisional budget? Is there anybody that wants to address the board regarding the budget? Anybody? Okay, seeing no public comment, um, I will close the public hearing. And I think, you know, us, just for everybody's information, us commissioners, we're still, we're still, we're kind of over and uh so two weeks from now, we might have some more, we might have some of our own comments um on the budget as well, so um. Okay, so next item, number ten, monthly reports. Out of auditor.
All right, um. Good morning, everyone. Uh, presently, the Director of Equalization has transferred over their info, um approval from the state, the direct, the Department of Revenue, so I am now working on inputting all the um utilities into that program and then we'll send that on to Department of Revenue and start the process of tax billing, so that's what the main focus is right now.
Thank you. Any questions for the auditor? Okay, so we're so, and we can go work on the budget as well, helping us, keeping us straight on there. Um, Director of Equalization, Shawna, come on down.
Morning, Shawna.
Okay, so uh the start of this month, September, we start taking our applications for a lot of the assessment programs um that are due November one, so like our flooded farmland, tax exempt, we start sending those out so that they have a couple months for them to get them back in, so we have everything that's required by the time um that November one date comes by. Um, we will be doing some sales ratio training with the Department of Revenue via Microsoft Teams this month a couple times. Um, working on a new state program to send sales in, so um they're easier to view and understand by the public. Um, and then that's on the actual state website. And then the appraisers and I will be in Rapid City the week of the eighteenth um for the annual assessor school. And we're still out working in the county, finishing that stuff up, um, starting to do a sales ratio on that and then we'll be getting some numbers um on the reappraisal cards going forward, so.
So, so you said there, there, the sales ratio stuff, that'll be, will that be on a website somewhere?
Yep, it's, it's on the state website right now, but like we use sequence numbers and different codes and like reject reasons where we don't, we didn't used to like write out the whole entire thing, so it wasn't, it's easy for the public to understand what they all meant. Um, and so over the years, we be getting more and more stuff on that for people to go to view any county and the states, you can go see all of it, but now they are working with Oxyomatic to get everything so we can upload way more of our information so that you can, on that state website, you can see a lot more information than just like sales price, you could actually.
So any sale or is it?
Yep, it's all the good sales is what we call them, so.
Okay.
Anything that's an arms-length transaction, you, you can see now, but they want to get to the point where you can actually understand what you're seeing, make more sense.
Any other questions for Director of Equalization?
Uh, I have a question. Steve brought it up to me. We got a piece of, county has a piece of property here in town uh like fifty by a hundred and fifty feet with a tree on it, you know, that's what I'm talking to.
Yes, because he took, he came in.
And it's just one of those pieces that kind of forgot, forgotten about or whatever happened to develop. And nobody's fault.
Mm-hmm.
What do we do with that?
Um, well, anytime the county, well, we do a sale, the treasurer does a sale with us, just like all the other tax deeds that we do. People aren't paying the taxes on it, but then you guys have to decide as a group, anything, I'm pretty sure that one just got like transferred to the county for some reason. He was mad, I don't know, that was many, many years ago, but I'm sure there's more pieces than that that just get transferred to the county, we have them in our name, nobody pays taxes on them. Maybe most of the time the neighbors just take care of them and.
It's, it's, right, and that's what happened here, the guy probably took care of it, maybe even thought he owned it. Who knows?
Where is it?
Um, oh, two blocks east of uh, East Ranch.
Yeah. And I know we just sold one not that long ago, yes. We just sold a small piece like that for like five grand to one of the neighbors, but yeah, Carol usually handles all, all the sales.
That, that one, is that lot fifty by a hundred and fifty?
This one that we're talking about?
Yeah.
It's decent size, yeah. The one that we just sold was like a twenty-five foot lot.
Is that a big enough to build on according to city?
It depends on where it's at and what the setbacks and all that stuff are in each individual neighborhood, that's more. We tell them to touch the city if they want to know about building rights, because we don't.
No, twenty-five foot setback on a fifty-foot lot doesn't make it, put a tree out in the dead tree.
Oh, twenty-five by hundred, so it's a hundred fifty deep, but I don't know, most of, you, you can't really, I don't know, because there's, there's side, side yard setbacks too, normal's nine, I don't know what it is in those other neighborhoods, it's different all over.
But I, I mean, how do we, how do we get rid of it? That's, that's my question for the pressure.
Yep, yep, she sets it up as a sale or however you go, yeah, you guys did.
Okay.
Somebody brings it to your guys' attention.
Yeah.
And then sets a sale date.
You know, like you said, there might be other little pieces around that there that are just kind of fell through the cracks for some reason or another.
Yep, yeah, that one wasn't taken by taxidermist, actually deeded to the county, otherwise it probably would have been sold a long time ago.
Okay, well, any other questions for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jody?
Back from the fair.
Winding down.
You can come unpack my van with me, I'm gonna go do that next. Um, Achievement Days, I have, I, I wasn't here in August, it was during our Achievement Days. That went very well, a big thank you to all our volunteers that we have that helped put that on. Um, yes, we just wrapped up the South Dakota State Fair, I got back about eight-thirty last night. All the results can be found on our extension website, extension dot S D state dot E D U under four H and State Fair, and so all the results from every competition that was at the State Fair on there. I, I have looked at our judging competition and we had one beginner who got first in the state and one senior that got first in the state in CDM, so it's great to see that. Um, I spend my week um as co-chair of the special foods contest and the fashion review, and we've had about a hundred and ten in each contest, kids from across the state in those contests, um. So there's a lot of stuff going on at the State Fair all over. Um, they did allow, State Fair did allow this year to, because of the heat, if they were done showing their animals, that they could go home, so that we didn't lose them, you know what I mean, so that they could take off, so if they're done with beef, they could take off and head home, so that was gracious to, you know, for them to be able to do that. Um, we do have some youth, this is our first time ever, we have shotgun and twenty-two going on in um this summer and they are going, headed off to the fall shoot um this coming weekend, so it's first time we have some great volunteers working with that also, so um that is happening this weekend. Um, youth will now work on their four-H record books and apply for our county awards, as our four-H recognition event is Sunday, October twenty-ninth, and that will be, wrap up our current four-H year. And then we'll start our new four-H year on October first, so we have um lots of cloverbuds are turning eight, so I have a lot of cloverbuds moving up into four-H this year also, so. Um, yeah, and then our extension, SDSU Extension Conference will be in Pier this year and that's September twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth. Um, usually it's been in Brookings, but we're headed to Pier, I guess, this year, and that's the last week in September, so September will fly as fast as August did, I guess, so. Any questions or?
I did uh talk to JT about getting photos in the paper for Achievement Days and he he referred me to his cohort, right? As far as.
What did I bring, Roger or?
Roger.
Yeah.
Yeah. And he, so if there's a, um, back in Achievement Days or whatever, and I don't know how to get a hold of Roger.
Oh, I can give you her to the donor.
Okay.
You don't need to say it.
Yeah, we'll get it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jody.
Glad to leave the gate last night.
All right, thank you. So number eleven, discussion of possible action regarding right-of-way on Cote Road Two.
Good morning. I have talked to you guys once before on this, this is the right-of-way that the state currently owns. It'd be west of the research farm that hooks up to Highway twenty, it's our county road two. And uh goes west two miles, this, this would have uh had county or state Highway twenty all the way over to state Highway twenty west of Florence, but we have two miles of it on our county road. And currently, there's a hundred and fifty foot right-of-way that the state owns. And if we take that, we have to maintain the right-of-way. And I sent Lee some pictures this morning.
Yeah, okay.
And uh where our county road is, there's power lines on the north side, that's right about fifty feet. The extra twenty-five feet is being farmed. I'm not going to, I do not want to have to make somebody a criminal for farming the right-of-way that they've been doing for years on that spot, if we take the hundred fifty. If we take it at a hundred, it has to be replotted. And the state wants us to do it, and I.
There's the picture of this.
Right there, that, that flag is roughly fifty feet from the center of the road. The next picture would be, there's, there's another picture with uh out in the bean field.
Which picture?
There should be the next one.
Oh, just the next one, okay. All right, give me a second.
They're in the bean field now?
That one?
Yeah, see, the next twenty-five feet is out in the bean, out in the bean field. And if they give us the right-of-way, they want us to maintain the right-of-way, which they actually don't do themselves, so. So I asked about the hundred, if we just took the hundred feet, which would be the first flag, then everything has to be replotted in that first two miles. And uh I asked, why would we have to do it, you're trying to give us the property, so they're still working on, I just wanted to give you an update. And uh.
Question, do we have to accept it?
Yes and no, that's our county road.
Maybe you don't have time to talk about it, but it's interesting that it's a state, it's county road, the state has a right.
Yeah, seeing
yeah, okay.
That first section of road since I've been here, they took it over, they bought it in nineteen seventy. Since I've worked for the county, we were big, we regraded that first mile of road. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's still, they're trying to figure things out. And uh maybe through, I talked to Luke and he's looking into things at First District and planning and zoning, so I just wanted to give you an update what's going on, so.
Also from that corner, you know, where Highway twenty, they proposed civil going to go years ago.
Yep.
See, there's easements, the state has easements through there, and I'm working with a producer that the easement goes through the whole, whole section of his land.
Mm-hmm.
And uh he's got word and so the offices up here that the uh DOT state is anticipating turning those easements back for the farmers.
Yeah.
So there's another part, an estimate too.
Yeah.
Well, that's what they're trying to get that corner straightened out.
Yeah. Yeah, because there's, there's a full two mile, two miles there, that's county road, so. And then, then it angles off to the south and west.
Yep.
And then it gets on a township road and it goes all the way over to the old Grass Lake Station corner. So, but we only have two miles, so. I just wanted to give you an update and uh Scott Pretzler is the guy from the DOT that's working on it. And uh.
They told us that maybe sometime in October we might hear something, so I don't.
Yeah.
So.
So.
Chair.
A hundred feet would put us just on that bean field side of those poles?
Yeah, it'd be right where that orange flag is, right on the
By the pole.
Right side of the pole there.
That's a, that's a hundred feet, okay.
Well, you gotta go across the road to the other side, because that's how they do it is.
Fifty feet to the center.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that'd be fifty feet to the center of the road and then fifty feet going to the south.
Also, whose law, whose poles are those?
Oh.
I'm sure those are East River or, or County and Park Electric, one or the other.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I can't remember.
So I might have.
Down a mile and then they had solve again, so.
They have probably East River.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, back when they took that property, they did easement, so that's all recorded. It was lot H ones and lot H twos for road purposes for right-of-way, so.
It was a lot of H ones and a lot of H twos for road purposes for right of way, so that's probably why they're trying to.
Yeah, because it's all plotted for that, so.
So, but it's like this now, the state hasn't been enforcing before.
Yeah, they, they don't maintain the right of way, so. Why should the county have to maintain the right of way? And that's why I said we'll just take the hundred feet, and then, then they wanted everything.
Hundred feet looks adequate to me, so.
You know, well, I don't want to go all past those power poles to do anything they inhale, so.
Particularly the people that are farming the ground now are just farming ground.
Yep.
It's just there.
Yep, yeah, it actually belongs to the state, you know, where that, for this right flag is that. That belongs to the state.
And the state isn't getting any compensation.
No, because they're, they're trying to get rid of the property, so.
They replot it, it'll be on the county tax records.
Mm hmm, yep.
So they've been farmed all these years, no tax.
Right.
That would be my assumption.
How wide is that then, they're, they're farming?
Well, roughly from flag to flag is twenty five feet. So.
All right, well, so, so any action that?
No.
There's a, just so that's.
All right.
I just, I just wanted to inform you, I thought maybe we'd have more information by now, but. I just wanted to keep you up to date on what's going on there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Just make sure. Thanks, right. Right, number, number twelve is actually to participate in the local emergency management performance grant program.
I was in the pack here somewhere.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Andrew.
Waiting patiently. Pull up the, back in here so we can see over the screen. Go ahead and start to.
Well, I, yeah, I do believe that it's part of your packet that, uh, after the. The L E M P G or Local Emergency Management Performance Grant. Uh, I guess the fun start originate with, uh, DHS and then through FEMA, it's passed down to the states and, uh, just allocates. Um, money to local communities, uh, in order to make sure that, uh. I mean, there's, there's an emergency manager in every county that's, uh, making sure that they are resilient and better able to. Respond to disasters at the community level, so I guess what that does for us is, uh, it. Pays fifty percent of my salary and we're a large enough county that, uh. It also pays fifty percent of, uh, Sherry's salary.
This is an annual thing or semi-annual thing or?
So annually, we choose whether or not we're going to participate.
Second, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman, so basically we're giving permission for, to apply for the grant, that's basically all.
That's right.
Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, all appear, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say nope, that motion carries. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Fly away, so. Okay, number fourteen, discussion on building specs for the coroner building. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait.
Oh, yeah, no, let's do that.
This won't take long, I guess, basically.
Okay, number, back, back up, I misspoke, number thirteen, actually to move the others, come the treasurer and look the registered needs fees.
Okay, so, uh, others count with the treasurer, so, so it's the amount of cash on hand on the last day of August. Um, so what investments are in the, several restricted, it has stuff around there. School, council, cities and towns, but they all receive, standing amount that we have is thirty four million three hundred seven thousand three hundred nineteen twenty five cents. And then to note, the monthly register of deeds fees for the last day of August is in the amount of thirty two thousand twenty one dollars and forty five.
Move to approve, motion by Van Dusen.
Second.
Second by Schwer. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, say nope. Motion carries. Okay, so, sorry, so now number fourteen, discussion on building specs for corner building. Terry.
Morning, Terry. Looks like you guys have pictures, hopefully.
Yep.
Um, I went and got a, uh. About bid.
Is there anything to put up or just?
I'll give you the best copy of it. Yeah, it's right there. Okay, yeah, it's just a spec, so, um, this is what they recommended. Uh, for cost wise, so thirty by thirty, it'd be, um, metal on the outside. Metal on the inside, there'd be one overhead door, you can see in the middle, and one small service door on the side. Next to it, um, there would be no windows. So we don't have to worry about.
Is that in the pack? I didn't, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Here.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, just for clarification, um.
Uh, way down at the bottom.
Way down at the bottom.
Terry is our county coroner, and a while back, uh, we had discussion concerning, um. Possibly adding a coroner's building for the refrigeration unit that he purchased in his budget this year. Uh, currently, we have no place to house that refrigeration unit. Uh, for the storage of deceased persons, so, um, we need to, uh. We need to get this process going so that we have a place to do that, so. We asked Terry a while back to go and get, uh, specs on a building, and this is what he's come up with.
Does, does it need to be that large, thirty by thirty?
They said by the time you build it, if you go even smaller, it's going to be about the same price wise, because. Apparently there must be a, a break off where.
Yeah, go, okay.
Uh, somewhere, right, so they said going thirty thirty is pretty standard now, so, um, that's what he went with.
Terry, is this a building that you could store your equipment in?
Yes.
Your van?
Yes.
And?
I would be able to store both the cooler, equipment, and have a partial office in there, so that if families need to come view, we could do it in there. So it'd give us enough room to do that, the only thing we would not add to this would be water.
Uh, is it, is it, it's on a concrete pad?
Yes, it would be a concrete pad, I think he went five inches thick. Yeah, five inch thick concrete with twelve inch thickened edge and rebar space at twenty four.
And did we, did we see, talk about the price yet?
No, we have not, this was just the specs.
Just specs, okay.
Yeah, this does not include the electrical or the heating and cooling, he put in there for the heating and cooling, just one of those pad, um, what do you call it? Um.
Hanging in British.
Not even that, it was one of those ones that you put on, up on the wall, and part of it's outside, so it'd be air and heat, so.
This is a ten foot sidewall?
I knew you were gonna ask that. Um.
I see a hundred and twenty one.
Yes, I believe it's ten foot sidewall, so that way a vehicle can be brought in.
You talk about sidewall, you're talking about height? Currently, I guess.
So the ceiling will be how many feet?
I'm looking here. Eighteen.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it'd be two by six wall, a hundred and twenty one inches tall, so that's. Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to think down the road a little bit further, and with. Everything fluid, if we shouldn't go with the two foot taller sidewall, which would give us more uniformity. I mean, you know, in case, who knows what changes in the future, now's the time to do it.
Okay, so go twelve foot sidewalls?
Build for future growth.
At the building.
Wait, well, the future.
Yeah, but there's a cost impact though, I know you don't have costings right now.
Yeah, there's no cost yet.
Be good to know quotes both ways.
I can.
You can do that.
Yeah.
So is this big enough to say we'd need two coolers?
Uh, yeah, we would be able to get two coolers, yes, I mean.
I mean, ten foot is about what, size of a standard garage?
What, oh, and we're still working on a location, yes.
Still working on a location, talking with Rick, I believe that there would be space out at the county highway shop to build a building like this. Um.
And, and if we're gonna put it out there, who knows, that's why I'm saying twelve, si- as a thought, twelve foot sidewalls.
Yeah.
Make it more of a multi-use building.
Just in case it, yeah.
I don't think there's going to be that interest.
Well, yes, the acting we need is, again, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you, have us authorized you to, uh, uh, open the south spence?
Spence?
Well, doesn't, we're just, we're just have discussion, we just have discussion of the agenda.
Just discussion then.
I think we're gonna, we, we probably need to determine a location before we. You know, we could get maybe a few quotes just to have an idea, but I think it's probably gonna be of a science that we're gonna have to, uh, bid it. Um, I mean, if that's interesting, but the, uh, I mean. So, I mean, if we don't know where we're gonna put it, do we want to put it up a bit, it's just kind of the question.
Well, I think that's up to this commission to decide where we want to build it.
Yeah.
The county has property, ample property around the county. We just, Terry just needs some direction on how we want him to pers- pursue this, because he's been sitting here. In limbo for quite some time, so he comes to, to us with these, these, um. These graphics, and so now we need to give him direction on what we need him to do, if that's.
Come up with a location, I think we need to work on where to put it, okay, I mean.
And any county product property, I mean, you know, whether we put it at the shed or whether, I, I'm not saying this, but out at the, uh, on our spare lot by the ice arena. The old ice arena. Hope you're some, there's been some talk about making it into a law enforcement center. But, you know.
Uh, yeah.
Let's, uh, okay, so, uh. What if? Like, we have, we're, we have a couple, we're talking about a couple options just on where to put it, so maybe let's.
Whatever you want to do, the next time, do like approve him to go out for bids or, you know, specs or whatever quotes, however you want to do it, it's just discussion right now, so.
Can we show these with, with Rick, our highway superintendent out there, and let's see if that, see if these specs would fit out there. Uh, Terry, that's probably a good central location for you.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, and the highway shop.
Out of the way.
Thing is just secure too.
And, and it would be, yeah.
Yeah.
So, visit with Rick and, and then, um, let's get it on the agenda.
So the next agenda's deadline, right, would be, um, September, uh. Fourteenth by noon, so you have a little bit of time, so if you want to get it on for the nineteenth, just let me know by that morning, fourteen.
Okay, sure.
So, I mean, essentially what we're talking about is, we get the start of a concept, you know?
Yep.
And then the locations here are a key part of that, but so.
Okay, we already own the land out, out there, so it makes sense, so we wouldn't have to purchase land and.
Approval on it.
And I can help you with that, I'll help you with that, okay?
Fair enough.
I think it would be, I think it would be beneficial for him to see the concept drawing, so it would give us a good idea about a location out there.
I will do that.
Okay.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's very scary.
All right, all right. Number fifteen, action to declare a laser jet pro printer at the treasurer's office surplus to be destroyed.
It's old, it's.
An explanation destroyed.
It just died, it quit working, it just quit working, so we just need, this is the process, we have to determine that it's, uh, surplus to be destroyed.
So move. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Schwer, any other discussion? Hearing none, all appear, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say nope, that motion carries. And similarly, on the, number sixteen is actually to declare a sharp. We are a five two zero cash register at the treasurer's office surplus to be sold, uh, then, uh. So move, actually, motion by, second by, and using any.
No, just, yeah, that is just surplus, they want to sell it.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all appear, please say aye.
Aye.
Say nope, that motion carries.
Wait, I'll show you in a second.
Uh, seconded, motion by Waterman. Okay, good, just a little bit to.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, then, let's see, number seventeen, fundraiser raffle, by the way, we sell sure, uh, girls and boys basketball teams. So we're just making note of that raffle.
Yeah, that's, by law, they have to do that.
Yeah, okay, well, a letter on that, but just, so that's publicly noted.
Isn't that an informational item only?
Yep, yep, that's what it is, exactly. Um, but also there, there's your requirement for them to do that. Uh, number eighteen, discussion and possible action to enact a burn ban resolution, um. Andrew, we had some nice rain this morning, so we think, move on. Number nineteen, action to approve a.
No abatements, no abatements today.
No bait, okay, number twenty, uh, claims for payment.
Right, and you received that, um, claims for payment, this is for the August salaries. In the total amount of seven hundred and three thousand nine hundred eighty nine and ninety three cents.
So a motion to, so, so, motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Um, any discussion, hearing none, all appear, please say aye.
Aye.
Say no?
No budget supplements.
Motion carries in, to number twenty one, no budget supplements. Uh, actually to prove personnel.
We do have one of those, uh, Chad Rumska. It's effective date nine eleven, correctional officer in the jail, step one, twenty three eighty six, he's a new hire.
To, motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Schwer, any discussion? Hearing none, all appear, please say aye.
Aye.
Say no, that motion carries.
Right.
Okay, and then, uh, action to approve travel request, I think we saw.
Right, we have several of those, so we have, um, two from government buildings, um. One is, there's a conference, both of them are conferences actually, and it's a budgeted item. We also have an emergency management travel request for a conference. And you have all the information, we have a correctional officer going to training. Then we have two from welfare, um. One is a site visit and the other is a early learner summit.
Move to through the three class.
Okay, there's my Johnson, second, second by Van Dusen, any other questions, discussion, hearing none, all appear, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, say no, hearing, uh, that motion carries. Okay, number forty four, public notices, possible formal commissioners, we know about the, uh, S D A C C convention, um. Next, uh, next week, so we won't be just, just to, that's the twelfth and the thirteenth, so the twelfth is Tuesday. So we won't be meeting here next week, but some of us will be attending the, uh, the convention, so I think I'm going, Mr. Johnson's going. Which is, we're is attending, so that's gonna be in Sioux Falls. Okay, any? Anything else? Okay, um, number twenty five, old business, the old business. Been done, number twenty six, new business. We talked about a lot of stuff, and number twenty seven, open the public comments, we, we called in, we. Just see, has any commissioner comments?
I did attend the, uh, South Dakota Retirement System, uh, meeting this past weekend, uh. That the fund is one hundred percent funded, uh, we looked at, uh, increases in the COLA. And, uh, they're a lot lower than what we've been looking at here as far as the requests from our, our, uh, employees. Uh, we're at two point one right now, as far as the increase that we're working on, and next year, a year from now, we just. Always try to look a year or two ahead, and it's gonna probably be, be less than two percent a year from now. Then the, uh, actuaries anticipate that the, uh. Inflation rate will probably be in the neighborhood of three percent a year from now, so inflation is coming down the right way, going down. But, uh, as you, have you watched the markets? Uh, markets are higher in heck one day and lower than heck the next day, map and down, and so it's, it's just a tough market out there right now. But, uh, be sure the, uh, uh, system is financially solid and that's what we want.
Yeah, we're blessed to be the state with a.
Yeah.
Thanks for your services, our chair on that board.
If I may, uh, I had the opportunity to attend the South Dakota State Fair, as a few of you other commissioners did, and I had a chance to go by the. The weed booth and, uh, visit with, uh, Steve, uh, sitting over there, and, uh. It was a good opportunity for me to be educated on the weeds. Uh, that we have in our area, and not only this, but West River, South Dakota, and that was really interesting to me. To see the different species that we have out there, so. Next year, if you happen to be out there, uh, swing by that, uh, that booth and check it out, it's really, you know, when you walk by it, you say, oh, they have weeds and planters. Uh, but when you stop and take a look at it and really see what they're doing, it's, uh, it's interesting, so thank you very much for doing that, and it's. Uh, I think it's very beneficial for us to send you to that, uh, time at the South Dakota State Fair, you represent. Uh, I think it's very beneficial for us to send you to that uh time at the South Dakota State Fair. You represent us well and. We appreciate your knowledge out there. So it was very good. Thank you.
So we have. People to supervise our weeks.
You know, we oftentimes we joke, we joke about the mosquitoes and this mosquito conference and we joke about the weeds and. And stuff, but that's very serious business and we gotta stay on top of that. And so it's good to know that we have uh you on top of that. So thank you.
Yeah, I I also was at the fair on Saturday and uh went through the weed booth or went by the weed booth, didn't go through the weed booth. But uh. I know I've been there a number of years and I always look up and see the different kinds of thistles.
Mm hmm.
And I'm sure the pots were there before down about knee level when they were younger. And I guess I just never.